I'm calling the meeting to order. So Terry, would you do the roll call?
[inaudible]
Here.
Lisa Ramon.
Here.
John Mastin.
Here.
Hala Ederman.
Here.
Eric Coran.
Here. Next up, we're going to take a moment for silent prayer or private reflection. Will you all stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Hi.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
So next up, is there a need for an executive session? I don't believe there is, so I will go on. Do we have anyone from the call to the public?
No, we do not.
We do not, so we will move on. So next up is our representative from the Lake Havasu City Educational Association, Ms. Carol Nowakowski. So you are up.
All right, good evening, President Aron, Board members, Superintendent Stone, and directors. It's that time of year for the state budget to be revealed, the dropping of bills, and state committee meetings. The House and Senate Education Committees both meet on Tuesdays, which up until about 30 minutes ago, I was watching until they closed. On today's meetings, I have printed a list of the 20 House bills and the 16 Senate bills that will be, or possibly will be discussed in the near future. I have also printed the language for the bills that were available, not all of them were available, but of the House and Senate fact sheets. Those are what I call Cliff Notes for our bills. Today, one in particular was discussed in length that could affect you as the board, and it's regarding the funding for ASBAB, so the Arizona School Board Association. So I have a copy of the language. Also, the video will be available tomorrow if you want to watch and hear the pros and the cons for the bill. But it did pass, and so the next step is to go to the floor to be discussed. Also, I would be, I was texted during all this while I was watching the bills and the committees, and I had an administrator wanting to make sure that I shared. As we entered into the week three of our second semester, I will start by reminding you, as I always do, staff is tired and we are working at full capacity. I'm sure each of you are fully aware, but just in case you aren't, all staff are working through many daily obstacles to keep our students learning. I wish I had a solution to share with you besides the request for grace and to be mindful as to what is placed on future calendar invites that would extend beyond the need for our classroom instruction. And I will pass out the bills, and then thank you for your time.
Thank you, Carol. Next up, we have some recognitions from Starline.
Good evening. Tonight, we are going to recognize some Starline employees, and we have Ms. Triasi, the principal here to share that information.
So I appreciate that both of my employees were able to attend tonight. And Starline Elementary would first like to recognize Justin Torres, a special education paraprofessional at Starline. Justin is a vital part of the Starline staff. At the last minute when subs are not available, he often steps in and covers classrooms. He's very, very flexible. Our students love working with Justin, who is outstanding with classroom management and his teaching skills. We are all working to encourage him to pursue his teaching degree, which we hope he does someday because he will be amazing leading his own classroom. He works all day with struggling learners, has a tremendous amount of patience, and then ends the day at certain times of the week where he also works for Parks and Rec program, and he's also very patient and very fun with the kids in Parks and Rec. So I'd like to have Justin come up tonight and honor him. The other individual that I would like to honor tonight is one of our certified teachers, Madel Danen. Over the last four and a half years, she has made tremendous growth in the self-contained resource teacher at Starline. She's a lifelong learner who is always open to constructive feedback. She's extremely respectful to her colleagues as well as extremely patient with her students who have many layers of needs. She recognizes their challenges but always works to build up their strengths. She is a hard worker who is very dedicated to her profession. So Madel, would you come on up?
So next up is our consent agenda. Do I have a motion around the consent agenda?
I would move that we adopt item number four as presented.
I'll second. Any discussion?
John Mastin?
Absolutely, yes.
Hala Ederman?
Yes.
Lisa Ramon?
Yes.
Hala Ederman?
Yes.
There are no discussion items, so we'll move on to action items. So action item number one is in student achievement, gifted scope, and sequence.
Mr. President and Governing Board, LHUSD provides specialized educational opportunities to identify gifted students as outlined in ARS 15779. This statute defines gifted education as the appropriate academic course offerings and services that are required to provide an educational program that is an integral part of the school day and commensurate with the academic abilities and potential of a gifted pupil. LHUSD strives to provide a differentiated, enriching environment that enables gifted students to learn at levels commensurate with their intellectual abilities and reflective of their needs. LHUSD recognizes that students identified as gifted have unique and differing learning needs and therefore provides a continuum of services by teachers who participate in ongoing professional development. The LHUSD gifted program incorporates differentiation in process, content, and product through its curriculum and instruction, acceleration, and enrichment during the regular school day. LHUSD supports these practices by employing a Director of Student Achievement, Gifted Coordinator, Elementary School Gifted Education Teachers, Middle School Advanced Course Teachers, High School Honors and Advanced Placement Teachers, and Dual Enrollment Teachers. LHUSD ensures these teachers, whose primary responsibility is teaching gifted learners, have or are working on earning Arizona Gifted Education K-12 endorsement. Law requires that the Governing Board develop a scope and sequence that meets statutory requirements. ADE has developed a template to be used that meets all the required areas of the scope and sequence. LHUSD used the ADE template to develop the attached scope and sequence. The LHUSD gifted scope and sequence details the identification process, structure of the program, the curriculum materials used within the program, teacher support, parent engagement, program assessment, and budgeting. The scope and sequence is required to be submitted to ADE for approval every five years unless changes were made the previous year. Districts must have an approved scope and sequence in order to receive the weighted student funding. ADE will monitor the LHUSD gifted education program this year. We now have a present all of those gifted learning needs to make sure that they understand how to be successful, both academically and emotionally.
So the current board-approved curriculum is going to be the base of our program with the gifted teachers differentiating their instruction to the needs of their gifted learners. In addition to using all sections of our Singapore math curriculum, our four or five classrooms will use Singapore's challenging word problems, which is a great source of challenging material for our advanced math students. Our sixth grade classroom is part of the new math curriculum adoption process, and the new advanced math curriculum will help prepare these students for advanced math at Thunderbolt. In English Language Arts, in addition to our CKLA and Amplify ELA curriculum, our teachers will use Socratic seminars, literature circles, and we are looking into adding Amplify Close Reading, which would provide our students with extensive practice in close reading to help them critically analyze complex texts and a creative application that provides tailored feedback. Our core knowledge, history and science, would be accelerated and extended by engaging our students in cross-curricular hands-on STEM activities, and our gifted teachers will also plan innovative project-based learning activities to accelerate learning. Instruction is student-driven, and these students thrive on problem-solving, questioning, and discussion, and using their critical thinking skills to advance their knowledge. This table here shows our district's current gifted population by grade level. We have 169 students in grades four through 12 who have been identified as gifted, which is 3% of our total student population. Again, our program begins in grade four, and it's based in one of our elementary schools, so that is why our elementary population is lower than at our middle and high school. This year, all 169 gifted students have been tagged in synergy with the areas that they qualified in, so that once they leave the elementary school, their label will follow them, and their teachers, their counselors, counselors, and administrators will all be able to see that they're gifted and be able to support their needs. This table here kind of shows our gifted academic pathway. Starline is home to the district's self-contained fourth through sixth grade gifted program, which enables our students to develop their unique gifts to their fullest potential. Thunderbolt currently offers advanced math, and we are looking to add advanced courses in other areas that are aligned to our core curriculum while accelerating and extending the learning of our gifted and high-achieving students. Once our students enter Lake Havasu High School, they are offered honors classes, advanced placement, and dual enrollment courses. And this table here shows that most of our gifted students do stay in the program by taking those advanced and honors classes in grades eight through 12. All of our gifted students will meet with their counselors at least once per year to discuss their placement options and support those students who are not continuing in the program. The Arizona statute states that all districts must identify gifted learners by making testing available at least three times per year and provide services during the regular school day. The statute lays out that students who score at or above the 97th percentile on national norms in any of the three batteries, verbal, quantitative, or nonverbal, will be identified as gifted. LHUSD uses the state-approved cognitive abilities test, or the COGAT. Here is an example of the COGAT student profile narrative report that will be given to homeroom teachers and parents of the students who test. We also provide teachers and families with the individualized student COGAT ability profile, which uses the testing results to explain student characteristics, instructional suggestions, and how to build on that particular student's individual strengths. Here are our three testing dates for this year. The winter testing cycle was just completed at each of our six elementary schools, and we were able to test 92 students in grades three through five. The spring testing nomination window is now open until April 29th for all students currently enrolled in grades three through five, and all students within Lake House Unified School District or any local education association may be recommended for gifted screening by their parents, their guardians, teachers, school administrators, counselors, community members, and all of the nomination forms are available at each individual school site and on our district website. Our final gifted testing date will take place in July before school begins, and students are only eligible to test once per year, and results will be used for their gifted eligibility for the '22-'23 school year.
So that's one of the things that we're really excited about. Previously, we were only testing during the summer, and with that, teachers really weren't able to prepare for the students who were in their classes. We were asking parents who were potentially going to change schools to make that decision pretty late. And so we're very excited that we've adjusted those dates so parents can think about it. This year, we have three new teachers to the gifted program. We have a teacher retiring and a teacher who's leaving the community, and so we were really excited to prepare and plan for next year, starting now. For the past few years, grades three and four have been one classroom, so it's been a split classroom. As you can imagine, with Core Knowledge and Singapore, to be able to teach third grade, or sorry, fourth grade and fifth grade in Core Knowledge and Singapore in one classroom, two sets of students, it's really impossible. And so we made the decision this year to separate the fourth grade students out, and that really is going to give the teacher and the students the ability to interact with all of that curriculum. And so I'd like to introduce the teachers to you. I'm sorry, Teresa, this has been a very long time. And so we've asked them to come here tonight. Teresa Nigg is in the audience. She will be teaching fourth grade. She's a National Board Certified Teacher, a Golden Apple recipient. She is from NAU. She, you graduated from her, yes, it doesn't say that. She is a Lake Havasu High School graduate. She's been teaching for 20 years, and her favorite subject to teach is math. And so we're really excited to have her as part of the team. Jen Vargas. We're also very excited to have Jen. As we were selecting these teachers, we realized that this really changed the third grade at Starline, actually, the third grade for everybody, because these are some really amazing teachers. Jen's been teaching for six years. She's been, all of it has been at Starline. She's also a National Board candidate. Her degree is from GCU, and her favorite subject to teach is ELA, and we're very, very excited to have her. And then finally, Rachel Charette. Rachel is from Jamaica, and she's making the move to Starline. She's also a National Board candidate. She has her undergraduate degree in elementary education from Central Michigan. This is her sixth year teaching at Jamaica, and she's taught second grade and third grade. And she really enjoys math and that puzzle aspect of it, and that just goes really well with our gifted students. And so it was important for us to select these teachers early on because providing professional development and planning is essential. And so we've used our Title II funds this year to really support the appropriate training that these teachers have for gifted education. One of the things that they will be doing is they will be going to the Arizona Association of Gifted Teachers Conference. They will also be working this summer to further their skills. They are all back in school, taking coursework on gifted education. Jamie and Ms. Triasi are also working along with them on many of these activities to make sure that there is a whole team that is supporting gifted students. And then we're also working to support those teachers that teach those students at higher levels. So we're really excited that we have now to plan what the curriculum is going to look like, what those extensions will look like, and then to make sure the teachers are prepared to welcome the families for next year. So our next steps that we're working on right now, Jamie just finished her first round of testing at all of the schools. She tested over 90 students in the past few weeks. We will communicate the results of those tests with families, and we'll communicate what those scores mean, and that is really important because having a student who's in the 99th percentile of verbal looks very different than if your student is in the 99th percentile of quantitative or nonverbal. We will be meeting with the families of the students who qualify at Starline Elementary School. That meeting date is February 22nd, and so we will be welcoming them over. The other big change is that students who currently do not attend our schools, they also are welcome to test, and so families can nominate students, and we will test them, and so then they can decide if they want to be, receive our services to move forward. We'll be working with gifted teachers to identify lesson sequences and identify any supplemental resources that are needed. And then, as I said, the next steps are supporting those seven through 12 teachers. A lot of times, as a high school teacher, I'm a content expert, but I don't really know what it means to work with advanced learners. And so although more content is important, understanding who they are is also important. And finally, the other big piece that's important to me is collecting data. You know, like I said in the beginning, gifted students are not always students that work the hardest, get the best grades. They're not always your typical smart students, and so ensuring that we're gathering data to make sure that they're successful, whether in the self-contained program, but then also looking at that data all the way through high school, and what are their outcomes beyond.
I would like to move to approve six programs presented.
I'll second, but I would like to ask some questions. Well, thank you for the presentation. It actually did answer a lot of my questions as you were going along. Some questions I did have, so one of the next steps will be identifying supplemental materials that might be necessary. It sounds like you're going to take Core Knowledge and Singapore math and then just kind of expand that and go maybe a little bit deeper with it. Do you anticipate that there will be any sort of like additional supplementary program or something like that that has to run alongside it? Or do you think that the materials that we already have approved for the general education will be enough as long as it's supported with extra projects?
So one of the things with gifted is extra projects are very important, but we also want to accelerate the learning. And so something like CKLA, Close Reading, it aligns to CKLA, but it is supplementary, and so that is something that we would be looking at. And then the Singapore, those extra math problems, those things are supplementary. Those are very, very inexpensive. In addition, there is a very, very large library that already exists at Starline that we want to use, but we want to make sure that everything is connected. So how can we look at the materials that are there and can connect them to the Core Knowledge? So those are the things that we're working through to see how we can stay very true to CKLA and Singapore and where we will need to supplement. When we look at the materials, we are not teaching all of the grammar, all of the extensions, so that will be our first place to go, but we'll be looking elsewhere as well.
When I was in gifted, because I was actually, I went to the school system here, and I was going to be gifted students in middle school. I got to learn on computers, and that was really good. I had to learn how to program in basic language on a computer when I was in middle school before I got up to Mr. DeBlasey in high school. I'm talking more about it, but it's a good thing they always have extra stuff that you don't, that's sort of big on the programs.
And I agree, and looking at the technology aspect is also an important aspect that we know about. We know that there's the STEM program over at Starline, and we've been talking about how can we make sure that it's connected to gifted and still open to all of all students.
I really liked that last point you made right there because having it open to all students, not everybody who's taking dual enrollment or honors classes, those opportunities are available for many students, not just people who are testing gifted. So this type of program brings opportunities to a lot of students in the district. And outside of the district too now, since we're testing, you know, allowing folks to test outside and then making decisions on their own based on what their scores are.
When I'm looking at the numbers for the fourth graders who qualified this year, there's only a handful. I know that you just completed testing 90 students, and then there will be an additional testing cycle, but is there any plan if the numbers remain this small?
So we just talked about that today. So the way that we have operated in the past, the way that we have operated in the past, and we communicate this with families, is after placing students who qualify at the 97th percentile of seats are available in the self-contained, sorry, fourth through sixth gifted program, the gifted committee will evaluate current year COGAT scores of students who score between 90 and 96 percentiles. The committee will first look at all the students who score in the 96th percentile, then the 95th percentile, all the way down to the 90th percentile, until all seats are filled. And so that's pretty common that we see throughout other districts that they allow, sometimes 95, sometimes through 90, but we think that that is probably a reality. That's been very common in our gifted program over the past 15 years that I know of, and those students would retest every year because we typically do see scores get higher as students test again and just get more comfortable with the test.
And the table doesn't include the current testing data, so this is historical, so it doesn't include the new qualified.
If the parents are, how are parents communicated this opportunity?
I'll let Jamie share that.
Absolutely. So first, I communicated with the administrators and the teachers. So they are all given a nomination form that they can send home to families, and the families can complete them, or the teacher themselves can complete those. That was for this first nomination cycle. We also, as a Student Achievement Department, nominated students based on their testing history, how Jamie was saying, if they've tested before and were interested in testing again, and also on their state testing results. So we nominated students, and then moving forward, the teachers, they can nominate, any community members can nominate, and that form is available at all the school sites at any time, and also we have a digital form for families to fill out if that's more convenient for them.
So if a parent of their child was gifted, they would contact any school, and they would be asked to get a recommendation from a community member or a teacher, and then they would be tested?
So it's not actually a recommendation, it's just a form that they would like their child tested. They complete the form with their information, and then that child is added to the testing date, and they would go ahead and either do that at their homeschool, or they can just go ahead and go do that on their website. They don't even have to contact a teacher if they want to self-nominate.
So it's very open?
It's very open, yes. And previously, we only did parent nominations in July, so we are allowing community and parent nominations all through testing cycles this year.
Any other discussion?
So switching gears a little bit from elementary to seventh and higher, do you anticipate that the seventh and eighth grade classes will be sort of modeled similarly to the high school classes where we offer advanced math, offer advanced ELA, that you don't have to test into gifted to take part in those programs?
Correct. So, and just because you're gifted... So, and just because you're gifted doesn't necessarily mean you would be in those courses if you had failed everything outright. But we would meet. And I think that's an important thing that we added is that they're going to meet with their counselors once a year because although it's not a huge number, but what did happen to the four students who are gifted, who are no longer taking any gift honors classes? I think that's a really important question to ask. Are you taking CTE? What's happened? So yes, it would be modeled something like the high school. We're working right now with the middle school to make sure that we have very solid data points for how students would enter into an advanced class.
And is that follow-up kind of the idea behind the synergy tag so that counselors do have a way of identifying and making sure that they're touching base with those students in the future?
So it's interesting. We needed the synergy tags to be funded. I don't think we thought about that at the time, but really, it was for counselors to know and also for teachers to know. I had a high school English teacher say to me, oh, I see that students gifted quantitatively, it makes a whole lot more sense now. You know, we typically see honors students as honors students in everything, but we don't think about, they probably have a strength. You know, we did see some students who are very damaged, but we more often see students who have strengths in areas where we need to work with them more.
Any other discussion? I think we have a motion in a second.
Karen Liederman?
Yes.
Arjana Aliar?
Yes.
Lisa Ramon?
Yeah.
John Mastin?
Absolutely yes.
Derek Coran?
I'll give an absolutely yes, too. All right. Next up is business service, vouchers, student activity funds, and auxiliary funds.
Thank you, Mr. President. Members of the board, approval for vouchers for December 2021, as well as student activity funds and auxiliary funds for November 2021, as listed in front of you and up on the screen.
I'd like to move to the exempt six point two as presented.
I'll second.
Any discussion?
Arjana Aliar?
Yes.
Lisa Ramon?
Yeah.
John Mastin?
Yes.
Karen Liederman?
Yes.
Derek Coran?
Yes.
Now we move to the informational section of the meeting. Seven point one, Superintendent, do you have anything for us, Dr. Stone?
I do, Mr. President. Thank you. First off, January is National School Words Appreciation Month. So each of you are elected to ensure the education in LHUSD meets the community's expectations. So this includes adopting curriculum, ensuring our tax dollars are spent wisely to support our district, both in the classroom and in the upkeep of all buildings and grounds, as well as adoption and monitoring of district policy. We want to sincerely thank you for all of your volunteer service to our staff and students. Your dedication and hard work keep us focused on the shared vision that leads to a high-quality education. So this year, not only this kindergarten students have joined us in honoring your service.
Mike, anything else?
I do. The next thing I want to talk about is Rachel's Challenge. So after a prolonged break kind of due to the pandemic, we are excited that during the first week of February, we will once again be participating in Rachel's Challenge. Students at the fifth, seventh, eighth, and tenth grades will be participating in activities focused on kindness and compassion for both ourselves and others. We're thankful for the outpouring of community support with both donations and volunteers. We need a lot of volunteers to make this happen, and our community has really stepped up to help us with that. And they'll be supporting our students throughout the week. Parents should expect to see information this week regarding all of the planned activities. And the last thing, not quite the last thing, but I would also like to share kindergarten registration. It's time for that for the 22-23 school year. We are excited to welcome families to our elementary schools. On March 1st, from 6:00 to 7:00 p.m., parents and students can meet teachers, see their classrooms, drop off paperwork for registration. And registration is also available in advance through our online portal, which they can find on our website. And the last thing for me tonight is really just to thank the student achievement department and all of those who were involved in figuring out this scope and sequence for our gifted program. It was really a comprehensive process where they really dug in and did everything from identification to the curriculum we're going to provide, where classes are located, who's going to be teaching those classes. And it was just, I'm just very proud of the work they did, and they worked so hard to present what they did tonight. And I think it will be a huge service to our kids moving forward.
I do know there are a lot of community members who are very excited about Rachel's Challenge, so that's great. Do we have any informational items from the Governing Board members?
Well, not really informative, but Mr. Moss, please say thank you to your kindergarten students. That was really thoughtful.
Thank you.
I do have a.
Also, we still have the textbooks that are available here at the district office for any of the community members that do want to view the English adoption. It seems like there was a frontrunner at the meeting, but we still want your guys' feedback.
Math is available as well. I'll put you back on that. I wanted to just point out one thing, and this relates to what Ms. Skalkowski said, what Ms. Festidegal, Ms. Stuneman said. You know, something that's going on that's kind of a pilot this term. How do we get these teachers to get in these advanced classes when finding them is so hard? So there is something called the Arizona Student Opportunity Collaborative. And Jamie, would you speak to what's going on with that?
Sure. A number of years ago, Glenn Lineberry, who is the principal of Globe High School, he wanted to make sure that rural students had equal access to advanced courses as their nonrural peers. And so he worked, you know, the idea, many of us, and we have it at MCC, have old II, it's interactive television, but how can we make sure that this school who has a physics teacher and that school who has a chemistry teacher and that school has a calc teacher, can we make sure that our students have access to the teachers when we may not have them in our communities? And so he's been working really hard on that. He's secured funding through the Helios Foundation and through ADE to get this project off the ground. And so our students took part in physics this year, and we're really excited about that. The physics class was actually developed by Mike Vargas, who was the Arizona Physics Teacher of the Year and is an Einstein Fellow living in Washington, DC right now. And so these are high-quality courses that we have access to.
I know it's been very hard to get physics teachers in the past, especially, and I remember on another board when the state is graduating like just five or six a year or something like that. So that's a very promising program. Opportunities for students. Moving on, is there any calls to the public at the end of the meeting? Moving on to communications, board suggestions for future agenda items?
I think it's time to do that ASBA too. There's a different option out there.
Do you want to, okay, so let's put that on a future agenda? Would we put that on a discussion item? Discussion item for next time?
Sure.
Any others? Press media clarifying questions. Then I will take a motion to adjourn. Someone? I'll second.
Lisa Ramon?
Yeah.